Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, February 1st, 2017. This time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 11th and the minutes of the regular meeting of January 18th be approved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 31A-17, an amount of $74,179.72 payroll. Warrant 31B-17, an amount of $97,009.31 accounts payable. And warrant 31C-17, an amount of $8,879.20 payroll, all dated February 1st, be approved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Correspondence. First piece of correspondence from the Swansea Water District regarding adoption of wellhead protection measures.
Thank you.
I should have looked at this. Anybody know anything about this?
Yes, I do.
Oh, thank you.
That was a troublemaker.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter from Mr. Markey, who is Superintendent of the Swansea Water District, and he requested that we take action to help protect the wellhead in Swansea wellheads that are actually located in an area that's partly located in Dayton. This is something that most of the water districts or water companies have requested. So I contacted Mr. O'Brien at the Dayton Water District for some kind of guidance, and he talked to Mr. Markey. And what Mr. Markey was looking for was adoption of the CMR that relates to wellhead protection. So Mr. O'Brien checked with our zoning board, and I think the planning board, and found out that the town of Dayton has already adopted that. So all we have to do is respond to Mr. Markey to let him know that the town of Dayton has already adopted wellhead protection. And as according to Mr. O'Brien, we've adopted it for Swansea and Somerset, and they have actually done it for Dayton. So I'm going to make a motion that we send a letter to Mr. Markey advising him that the town has accepted and is in compliance with 310 CMR 22.21 with 1 in parentheses, and just let them know we've done that. And I can send him a copy of the bylaw that we have on the rules or regs.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Again, any other discussion? If there isn't any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, under correspondence. Tonight, we have a piece of correspondence that we'd like to share. It comes from the Board of Selectmen regarding a session we had at 11:45 a.m. today. In attendance were reporters from Channel 10, Channel 12, and Channel 6, as well as the Taunton Gazette. This was in regards to the update of the employment status of Anton P. Roderick Jr. And I'd like to read to you what was read at this meeting this morning. This came from the Board of Selectmen. Subject matter was employment status of Anton P. Roderick Jr. Please be advised that the town has finalized its employment relationship with Anton P. Tony Roderick Jr. Tony's determination was based on what in the Selectmen's opinion were irrecyclable differences with him concerning, which was in the Board's opinion, his unacceptable judgment and conduct involving managerial issues. The Board has thanked Tony for his past positive efforts on behalf of the town and wished him well in his future endeavors. We will be addressing the permanent filling of his position as soon as practical, and we are thankful for the assistance and cooperation of Acton Chief Michael McGee and the entire Fire Department staff for their support and efforts during this transition period. As a Board or as individuals, we did not make any valid judgments about Tony's current issues with the District Attorney's Office. Our sole valid judgments were based on unacceptable judgment and conduct. We wanted to read that because evidently the stations have been given little bits and pieces, and depending on which one you watch, I haven't seen any of them. We just wanted to make it clear what the statement was that we released, and that what I just read was in its entirety.
I just wanted to say, I was not at this afternoon's meeting. I did have a prior engagement. I was not avoiding the meeting. I did have something very important that I needed to take care of at that time, but I do appreciate my colleagues for speaking in one voice on this issue, and I do stand by the decision that was made. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, announcements. I'll start with the basic announcement. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call 508-669-6431 for more information. Burning season is January 15th, 2017 through May 1st, 2017. Permits may be obtained at the Dayton Fire Station, 300 Main Street, for $10. Please make your checks payable to the Town of Dayton. And again, it's checks only. And according to our Acton Chief Mike McGee, at a department meeting today, he said the sales are going very well. They've already issued over 200 burning permits. The season is open, and again, that season is January 15th through May 1st. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1st through April 1st of each year, which means no parking is allowed on any street during this time. Landfill stickers available for 2017 are available at the transfer station during regular hours on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Again, payment by check only, made out to the Town of Dayton for $15. Registration is required for the vehicle being permitted, and the stickers are not transferable. The Greater Alborot Taunton Home Consortium has funding available to help first-time home buyers or owner-occupied rental properties in need of rehabilitation. For first-time home buyers, call Pro Home at 508-821-2514, or for the owner-occupied rental property rehabilitation, call Jim Howland at 508-821-1093. Senator Mark Pacico will not be holding office hours at Town Hall for the next few months. If you need assistance, please call his office in Taunton at 508-882-3000. Please complete your own town census and return it to the town clerk's office as soon as possible. Nomination papers for the annual town election are available at the clerk's office until Thursday, February 16th, 2017, and the deadline to return nomination papers is Tuesday, February 21st, by 5:00 p.m. The Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held in the lower level of Town Hall on February 18th, 2017, from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one statement about our website?
Sure.
I just wanted to let everybody know, in case you didn't tune in last week, the Board voted to award a bid for the redesigning of the town website. I just, I had a couple of questions about whether the redesign will affect people accessing certain things on the website, so I just wanted to let everybody know that no, current website services should not be affected or impacted by the redesign. So you will still have all your same access that you would normally have, so no issues there.
Continuing on with the announcements, we have a proclamation for the dedication of the Paul W. Koochur Gymnasium at the Freetown Lakeville Middle School. I do believe this dedication occurred last Thursday. This Board was asked to write a simple proclamation on behalf of the Town of Dayton by Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Ed Schwartz. And I'd like to read this. Town of Dayton proclamation. The dedication of the Paul W. Koochur Gymnasium at the Freetown Lakeville Middle School. Whereas in 1974, Paul W. Koochur graduated from Aponequett Regional High School and was a varsity athlete for the baseball and basketball teams. And whereas Paul earned his bachelor's degree in history from UMass Amherst and a master's degree in history from Framingham State University, and whereas Paul taught history at the middle school and high school level for the Freetown Lakeville School District for 32 years, and whereas Paul was an avid Red Sox fan, visiting several major league ballparks with his son, and coached baseball and basketball in the community, and whereas Paul was deeply devoted to his entire family as they were to him, now therefore, the Dayton Board of Selectmen call upon the people of Dayton to join us in extending congratulations and thanks to the Freetown Lakeville Middle School for the newly dedicated Paul W. Koochur Gymnasium, given at the Town Hall of Dayton upon the 25th day of January in the year 2017, and it's signed by Dean V. Cronin, Chairman Brett Ozograpos, Clerk, and Nancy J. Gulat, member. And Mr. Schwartz did represent the Town of Dayton in presenting that proclamation last Thursday, and we'd like to thank Mr. Schwartz.
Very appropriate.
Absolutely. And also, we don't want to forget Karen, who drew it all up and did a fantastic, very professional job for the presentation.
A second announcement, vacancies which currently are in existence in both the Cemetery Commission and the Development and Industrial Commission. Brett, would you like to handle that?
Yeah, yeah. So as I understand, the Cemetery Commission recently voted, I believe earlier today, to increase their membership from three members to five members. So actually, there are three vacant spots on the Cemetery Commission open. The Development and Industrial Commission currently has six members. They are allowed up to, I think Vicki said nine or 15? I think she said 15. But that's a lot.
I know, it could be a large number.
It's a large number. So if it's nine, there are at least three or more vacancies on the Development and Industrial Commission. And the Development and Industrial Commission helps, is supposed to help boost economic growth and development in the town. So it's an important commission, just like the Cemetery Commission is. So if you're interested, you can either download the volunteer application form from the website, or you can come to the Board of Selectmen's office, grab your volunteer application form, and fill it back out, and hand it back into the Board of Selectmen's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to add also, the, especially the Cemetery Commission, this committee Commission does not meet a lot, but it is an important commission here in town. And if you are appointed within the week or two, the commission actually expires at the end of June, because we reappoint. So if, you'd like to see what this committee, either of these committees are about, but especially the Cemetery Commission, because they're down to two members. It's an opportunity to get your feet wet, find out what they do, see how often they meet, and it will only be until the end of June. And if you choose not to be reappointed, you just have to let the Board of Selectmen know, but maybe there's some people out there that aren't sure, so I don't even know if they meet on a monthly basis. I know it's not regular, like we meet every week, so.
Oh, yes.
So think about that, and fill out an application, and just see what it's like. Thank you.
You forgot the most important part, they get to work with Mr. Ferry. Who knows a ton about the town.
Right now, that committee, the Cemetery Committee, Chairman is Tom Ferry, and Arthur Morton is the other member.
And we also had a late request from Mr. Ed Only, Chairman of the Cable Committee, who came up and was asking that if anyone out there is interested in learning about running cable equipment in the studio that we have on a lower level, or interested in learning about cable overall, please stop by the Selectmen's office and fill out an application. They are looking for some younger people. Mr. Only says that he's winding down, he's only been doing it for about 40 years, so he's looking to get some rest. And anybody's interested, just stop by and pick up a form.
Leave it early, is he?
This is, this would be good for, for example, a college student who perhaps is a media or marketing or, you know, digital media major. This might be good to kind of get that firsthand experience. It could be thought of maybe as an internship where you're learning, you're getting an education firsthand that you could then apply to what you're learning in the classroom. So just keep that in mind if we have any college students watching tonight.
And the last announcement is concerning a bid proposal request for HVAC plumbing at the Old Town Hall. Mr. Aggyar has asked if we would please read this. This concerns a bid proposal request, HVAC and plumbing, located, requests for the Old Town Hall, which is the Grange Hall next door. Please be advised that the Town of Dayton is seeking bids for the labor and materials to facilitate the plumbing and HVAC needs of the Old Town Hall renovation project. A bid description and restroom plans are available upon request from the Building Department's office or at the Selectmen's office. A site visit can be scheduled through the Building Department at any time until the end of the day on Monday, February 6th, and the bid submittal deadline is noon time Wednesday, February 8th. So anyone out there would like to throw a bid on and take a quick look at what you might be bidding on, just stop by either Building Department's office or the Board of Selectmen's office. We've got all kinds of needs here tonight.
We're needy.
Moving on to new business, first on the agenda, review, discuss, and act. The Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission certification of estimated resident population.
Mr. Chairman.
This comes to us from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission in Boston. Every, every year, they ask that we give them an estimate, a close estimate, at the estimated resident population of a town, and they use this for the issuance of how many licenses that the town is going to be issued. Every 5,000 increments, a town earns the right to have another full, I shouldn't say full-time, full-time beer and wine, but when you increase to 10,000, which would be our next landmark, we will have another full beer and wine retail, another full liquor retail, and probably one or two more on-premise, full liquor and full beer and wine.
And we don't get anything for 8,000? That's not a milestone?
No, no. Our next milestone, it's 5,000 increments. So the figure that we'll be sending in as of July 10th, 2017, is an estimate, but we're going to use our close estimate as of this week. 7,911 is the population, so they will base it off on that. I do think that by the, within the next couple of years, we will be, have the opportunity to take on more licenses from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
I think it was by 2020, I heard, 10,000.
So entertain a motion to send that population figure on to Boston, and let it sit there until next year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next, under new business, review, discuss, and act on a road opening permit for Pondview Excavating at 166 Walker Street. We have a request from Pondview Excavation for permission to grant a road cut at the following location. They would like to install new water service at 166 Walker Street. The water supply on that property is a well which has not tested positive. Town water does go by the property, but it happens to be on the opposite side of the street of the property, so a road cut is necessary. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Just for the record, Mr. Ferry has been notified, as well as the Superintendent of the Water District. They're both on the same page as far as it is a little off-season for road cuts, but this is a case of a closing on a house that would have to be put off till after April, and all the finance and what have you would go to the roadside. So with that said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it.
The interesting thing is that the individuals who will be moving into 166 Walker Street were former Dayton residents who had moved to Rehoboth, and now are moving back to Dayton. So we're happy to have you back.
We knew you'd be back.
It was only a matter of time. And I do want to commend the Board, because I know that they contacted us very recently, so no feet dragging on this Board.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on the resignation of Richard Gunther from the Historical Commission. Brett, if you may.
Absolutely. This is a letter of resignation that we received from Mr. Richard Gunther from the Historical Commission, dated January 31st, 2017. "Good evening. I recently resigned from my position," excuse me, I'm reading the wrong one. My apologies. He wrote, "Greetings on November 17th. I'm writing this letter to officially inform the Commission of my resignation effective immediately. After 10 years of service to the Commission and to the town, I find that my family responsibilities and activities have grown, and I need to devote more time in that direction. This was not an easy decision, as I have enjoyed my time on the Commission. Some of the things I participated in and particularly enjoyed were the passage of the Demolition Delay Bylaw, the restoration of the Segregated Schoolhouse, the formation of and participation in the Tricentennial Committee, originally initiated by the Commission, and working as the Commission's representative to the Community Preservation Committee, particularly the deliberations concerning and successful granting of funds to the Dayton Historical Society. I have enjoyed participating in and contributing to the ongoing mission of the Commission. Perhaps the most rewarding experience was working with a group of really great folks over the years. The membership has changed, but the camaraderie was great all the way through, the discussions productive and fun. I will miss it. Going forward, I do not intend to disappear completely. As time allows, I will try to be an active member of the general public and show up to meetings from time to time. My final thoughts. I still believe that the Segregated Schoolhouse should be used in educating Dayton school kids about the history of one-room schoolhouses and education from that era, like Cornbine School does in Rehoboth. Currently, our kids go on field trips there for this purpose. It would be great if they could just walk to our town-owned schoolhouse for that field trip instead. I would like, also like to see closer collaboration between the Commission and the Dayton Historical Society, coordinate some community activities, and work together to foster the ongoing education of the public about our rich historical heritage. Working together would result in an exponential benefit for the town. Two working as one from time to time while still respecting the independence of both would be more effective than working alone. In closing, I'm available to transfer the Community Preservation Committee materials I have back to the Commission and wrap up any other loose ends. I thank the Town of Dayton, the Board of Selectmen, and the Dayton Historical Commission for the opportunity to serve. Richard A. Gunther."
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Richard Gunther from the Historical Commission.
I second that.
With thanks and appreciation.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to say, Rich, I really enjoyed working with you on the 300th anniversary. And also, thank you to your wife and children for the pictures that are in the anniversary book. It was great to see the enthusiasm and to see a young family involved in that event, because hopefully, they're going to be here for the 350th.
Absolutely. And we'll try to get a picture from the ceremony on the website.
Do I hear any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Now, that one was for the.
That was Historical.
Yep.
Because next on the agenda is to review, discuss, and act on Richard Gunther's resignation from the Community Preservation Committee.
So this again is from Mr. Richard Gunther, dated Tuesday, January 31st of 2017. He writes, "Good evening. I recently resigned from my position on the Historical Commission, and therefore also from my position as the Historical Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee. I apologize for the late notification, but this email seems to have gotten stuck in my outbox and was never sent. Richard, I hear you. It happens to me all the time. In any case, please find my attached, attached my resignation letters, which I just read. I have enjoyed my time serving the town on various committees and commissions over the last 10 years and hope to again. My available time is currently limited, and I'd like to devote as much of it to my family as I can. Sincerely, Richard Gunther."
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Richard Gunther from the Community Preservation Committee with regret and with thanks for his service.
And hope that we will see him one day again on the committee. And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to reports, tonight, we have a status update from the Land Use Committee and Chairman of that committee, Mr. Jack Taylor, has just come flying up the stairs from the cable room, took off that hat, and now he's going to tell us about the Land Use Committee.
I'm honored to stand here behind this podium. Never been here before.
That's right. What's the number?
What's my number?
56.
56.
I thought we were in 60. I could be wrong.
I don't remember 60. No, because if we were 60, we'd be getting close to you know who, who doesn't want to be. Go ahead.
Anyway. So the Chairman of the Land Use Committee, and we've been meeting for the last several months, and what we're doing, we're looking at all the property that the town owns, and we're going through each piece of property, and we're making a recommenda, or we're designating the properties either to sell outright, to keep without any, and the third category is to keep with the intent of purchasing other land around it. the third category is to keep with the intent of purchasing other land around it. So that open space and that kind of thing. So we've done most of our work, we have one meeting next Tuesday, one more, and once we're done with that, we'll have all the, we call them the As, that's the sell-out right. And then what we're going to do at that point is get the planning board, the conservation commission, the open space committee, and zoning to look at, to look at all the pieces to make sure they have no interest in those pieces. And if they don't, then they'll go on a list, they'll go to auction, and Mary Hathaway is working on that, and hopefully that will happen probably within the next two months. So we invite anybody who wants to come to the meeting to come because it's kind of interesting to see how much land the town owns. A lot of this land we've owned for a long time, a lot of it is some pretty significant tracts of land, a lot of it is like taken for taxes, and most of those will go back to be in house lots, so.
When is that meeting, Jack, again?
Tuesday, next Tuesday, that's what, the seventh, at four o'clock, in this room.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're interested and just see what is out there, you pass the word, next Tuesday, four p.m., come and sit down and see what's out there. We did have one a couple of years ago that was pretty successful, you know, some of the farmers picked up some land that was only good for farming, whatever, so it's worthwhile to take a look and see what's there.
See, a lot of our land is landlocked, and so when you look at it, you know, we might have a parcel here and a parcel here, and then somebody owns something in between, so that might give us an opportunity to, you know, to purchase or trade or something so that we then have a decent tract of land for recreation, you know, hunting, fishing, trails, all kinds of stuff.
You've got to make them an offer they can't refuse.
Right.
Is the only piece of property that's got a building on it the Van Gisem Hall property?
Yes. Yep. The other thing I want to bring up is the open space committee. I'm trying to get the open space committee going again, it really has been inactive probably for the last two, three years, but they play a key role in this, and so that's why they'll be involved, and when we look at all this land, they'll be involved in that process as well. And think about it, I want to get all these committees together because they all play a part in it, and I guess the goal is to make sure everybody's going in the same direction, and that if a piece is useful to conservation, for example, that we don't want to sell that. If it's a good open space piece, we might not want to sell that, but that we have to coordinate with CPC to see if they have money to do something with it. So anyways, so we're looking for members for the open space committee. Right now, there's five members, some have not been very active, so I'd like, we'd like to get a couple more members, two or three more. There's no limit on how many we can have, obviously we don't have too many, but two or three more would be the ideal number. So if anybody's interested, come up to the Selectmen's office and fill out a volunteer form, and we'd appreciate your help and input, so.
Jack, how about the Land Use Committee? You looking for members there?
No, no. The Land Use Committee, we're almost done with our, with the process, so.
Jack, this may be a dumb, a very silly question. Is any of the land that the Land Use Committee is kind of looking to possibly sell, keep, whatever the situation is, is any of that agricultural?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, some of it, yeah.
Are they all in, are most of them in chapter sixty-one, or?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I'm trying to get a list of all the, the chapter sixty-one.
Which, I'm not confirming, what is that?
Agricultural, it's been designated like farm.
Yeah, but that's the land that has the tax breaks on it. If it belongs to the town, the designation may not show.
But that, that's also of interest for open space, because, you know, we can, you have to incentivize farmers or big landowners, you have to incentivize them somehow to not develop their land, because they have every right to do whatever they, you know, whatever they choose with it, but the other thing, I think, I think a lot of the landowners like Dayton the way it was, in the way it is, so hopefully we can keep it somewhat rural. You know, we're going to have housing developments and stuff, but keep certain spaces open.
Keep as much as we can.
Huh?
Keep as much as we can.
Yeah, exactly, so.
The chapter land he mentioned for an active farm, if they put their land in chapter, they get a tax break.
Right.
For as long as they keep it in that, you know.
Yeah.
If it's in the chapter land and they decide to sell it, the town gets the first opportunity to purchase.
First right of refusal.
Yes.
And that's a point, no?
And then when it comes out of chapter, if the town says we're not going to exercise the option, they've got to pay the back taxes on it.
For the difference.
Yeah, which can be, I assume, a sizable amount.
Yes, it can be.
Right, right.
I'd imagine.
I think we had some on, the last time we had the auction, we had some on Hart Street, and it was, it was suitable for farming.
Yep.
And one of the farmers bought it.
Sure.
So left it the way it was. It was perfect for him.
That would be ideal, right?
That serves everybody's, right.
It was a win-win, right.
He sold it already.
Did he really?
Same guy sold it. He bought it, he sold it, he made a couple bucks.
Some of the landlocked pieces that you're talking about, I know in the past, when that committee was first formed, which goes back to before I was on the board, because I remember Frank Kloster was on the board at the time when they set that committee up, and they approached the abutters, because when it's landlocked, you can't do much and the value isn't there, but if the abutters want to buy it.
Exactly.
Then it hits the tax rolls at a better level.
Yeah.
Original?
But also you want to consider, is that going to lead to another housing development?
Well, fortunately, it didn't back then.
Because I've said this-
It hasn't happened yet, but.
I've said this many times, but you know, I was on the open space committee before and we had a seminar out in the western part of the state, and they're really big on open space, and they had done a study, and actually, a residential property costs you about a buck thirty, you know, and, and so for every dollar you're bringing in, it's costing you a dollar thirty. So residential is not the answer to fix your tax rate. Open space is probably the cheap, yeah, the cheapest one, so. So that's why it's important to kind of, you know, control it and, you know. The other thing we've looked at is a couple of pieces that are around some of these new developments, you know, that are so thickly settled that possibly could, could be open space recreational for those, you know, right adjacent to those developments, so they have someplace to enjoy the outdoors and stuff, so. So anyways, those are the things we're thinking about, but mainly we've got to get these pieces to auction so we can clean that part of it up.
Do you know, offhand, how many people are on the land, town, the Land Use Committee?
Mary Hathaway, myself, Jim Aguirre, Tom Ferry, David Neely.
David's original.
Yeah, he's been there for, and then Dave Erickson, Erickson? Yeah, is that the right name?
I believe so.
I think just Dave was the original guy.
Yeah, I think he was. But it's been a very active committee, too. We have, everybody shows up, and we have a lot of good discussion. It's really helpful having somebody like Tom Ferry, who knows every piece of land and looking cranny in town, so he really sheds a lot of light on what the pieces are.
And how many critters are out there?
Yeah, exactly.
He knows that, too.
He knows all the habitat.
The critical.
You know, I talked to him about where I live, and he starts telling me about the pond and all this stuff. He hasn't been, he hasn't been out there for years, but he knows everything about it, so, anyway.
I did, I just wanted, since you touched upon it, I did, I know you, the Land Use Committee has been meeting almost every week. I know you've been working hard, so I just wanted to say, it's a volunteer committee.
Yes.
You don't get paid, you love the town, everybody that's on that committee loves the town, so thank you.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I know you're working hard, everybody on the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next under reports, we have a report from Selectmen Gulat on the Children's Advocacy Group Meeting.
Yes, last, last Friday morning, there was a meeting at the Venus de Milo, and it was a legislative breakfast meeting, and we had a number of local legislators, Senator Pacheco was there, Representative Hadad, Representative Oral, there was, I know his first name is Jay, and I'm forgetting this, his last name. He's from the, as I remember, North Attleboro area, so there was, there was a good selection, Bristol County people. The meeting talked about the need for funding and services, it talked about the services that they have received, they recognized the, well, he's retired now, police officer from Totten, there was Sergeant Borges, who had spent thirty-some years, and he was one of the people in the Totten Police Department who was the contact and did, in his, towards the end of his retirement, did a great deal of work in the area of children's advocacy, dealt with child abuse cases. The police officers from the various communities that were there were recognized, and from county government, the district attorney, Mr. Quinn, was there, and a number of the national office holders had representatives there. There was a woman sitting next to me from Representative Kennedy's office, and I believe there was somebody there from, wasn't the, somebody from the governor's office, but it wasn't either, it wasn't the governor or the lieutenant governor, but anyhow, this group is based in Fall River, and it's the Children's Advocacy Center, and they talked about the services that are provided and the number of children that have been served, and the scale continues to rise, which is not good. I, I'll hold this up to see if cable can pick this up. There's a barcode right, right in here that you may be able to see. As that barcode rises, that's the number of additional cases of child abuse and neglect that they have to deal with, and it starts out in two thousand and nine with approximately three hundred. Two thousand sixteen, it was already up to seven hundred, which is a hundred and twenty-nine percent increase, and so far for two thousand seventeen, they are about three hundred and fifty cases, and considering that it's only February, not a good sign. I think the most impressive speaker was a young woman who is a senior at UMass Amherst now. She was there with her mother, and she also read a statement from her brother, but this family came from Dartmouth, and she talked about her life as a young child, and her one goal was to play softball for the UConn Huskies, and by her freshman year in high school, all of that had completely gone due to abuse from her father, who, there are two girls and a boy in this family, and the father abused all of them, abused his wife. It, I think what was so frustrating was it took years for the mother to finally do I don't know if it was, I think fear was part of the problem, not having independence, totally dependent on this person, who, I don't want to say he was a pillar of the community, because obviously if you're abusing your own children, you certainly don't deserve that kind of recognition, but he was very active in the community. He coached sports, he was out there, so his public persona that everybody saw was not what was happening in that home. This young girl and her brother both attempted suicide, they went into counseling, and there were three ladies and a gentleman that were in the audience, who she recognized, because they were the people that she turned to for help, and she was totally against going for counseling, because she, it bothered her so much, she didn't even want to talk about what was going on in that home. But gradually she learned to trust these people and realized that they were her way out of this nightmare. Her father was prosecuted, and the sentence was fifteen to twenty years in prison. So anyhow, with the help of the Child, the Children's Advocacy Center in Fall River, she was able to turn her life around. As I said, she's graduating from UMass Amherst, she's looking to work in the field similar to this where she can help children. The, her brother's statement that she read was another tale of horror about what happened to him, without, it was well-written, from what was written, you could understand exactly what was going on without a lot of detail, and it was chilling. I, I don't know how anyone could have lived through this and put up with it, or tried to block it out for as long as they did, but the main thing is they got help, and both she and her brother are doing very well, and I was not familiar with this group. I know there are agencies out there that help abuse children, battered women, families that are torn apart because of this kind of abuse, but I didn't realize the extent to which they are dealing right here in this area. There's another chart, case distribution by greater metro region, and the area, largest area served, caseload, is in Fall River, and that's thirty-eight percent of the cases. New Bedford is thirty percent of the cases. Attleboro is fourteen percent of the cases, Totten is thirteen percent of the cases, and the remaining five percent of the cases that they have, I had referred to them, are outside of Bristol County. But the interesting thing was, this family was from Dartmouth, this was not an inner-city situation, this was a family with, as I said, what appeared to be a normal existence, and yet, from what we all heard, what was going on was just horrendous. It's hard to believe if you've never experienced something like that, what some children have to deal with, and families in general. Their funding, majority of their funding comes from the Commonwealth, forty-seven percent, grants and fundraising activities account for forty percent. The county gives them seven percent, and the federal slash VOCA gives them six percent. So this year, FY seventeen, their budget is eight hundred thousand dollars from all the combined sources, but Michelle Loranger, who was one of the speakers, she's the executive director, talked about how they got started with space that was donated, how they had to go in and clean it up and paint and bring in, I'll call it surplus furniture, just to have a table and chairs, so anyhow, they've done very well. If anyone wants information, it's the Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County, it's fifty-eight Arch Street in Fall River. The phone number is five zero eight six seven four six one one one, and they have a website, it's W W W dot C A C O F as in Frank, B as in Bob, C dot org. They're also on Facebook and Twitter, so I'm sure if you do a web search on Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County, you can bring this up, and if you need information about services, want to make contact with them, you can get it there. Also, anyone who is willing to help them with support, they're absolutely willing to work with anybody that can help them with their services. And in closing, I will just say, just a few more statistics. The total cases by gender, by far, twenty-five hundred cases were female, and approximately fifteen hundred were male of the group that was listed here. The, it's hard to read this, I'll tell you. Age groups, the largest age group is the thirteen to seven-year-old, thirty-one percent of the cases fall in that range. Twenty-nine percent of the children at time of referral are between the ages of five and eight years old. Twenty-three percent of the children are nine to twelve years old. 23% of the children are nine to 12 years old. 16% are zero to four years old. And roughly, age 18, from what they're saying, it's about, it's a very small, I'll say it's a very small sliver. They don't have a percentage here, it's that small. But when you look at this, on average, the female child that is abused is approximately 12 years old. That's when it starts, so. It was a sobering meeting, to tell you the truth. Listening to this young girl from Dartmouth who turned her life around, she had a standing ovation, and I mean standing. It lasted. Everybody was on their feet. And as she returned to her table, people were shaking her hand and hugging her and congratulating her. This was, this was really, you came out of there feeling good about the way you were raised and thinking about everything you just heard. Really, really, really upsetting, but very uplifting also. So anyhow, if anyone needs information, if you can either check the website or give us a call, I'll leave this paper with Karen, and there's contact information on it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Next, any acknowledgements?
Informally, I would like to acknowledge the board, who, I'm sure Selectman Gulat, at times, you felt like we were part of the traveling band for Mass DOT, following them around Bristol County, outside of Bristol County regarding the South Coast Rail. I haven't received any formal update, but I have read a couple articles that have begun to suggest that Mass DOT officials have, are quote-unquote "favoring," leaning, whichever adjective you'd like to use, adjective, towards the South Coast Rail, doing a Middleborough route, which I think would be fantastic. This board-
No, wait a minute. No, the opposite, it's the Stoughton one.
Excuse me, yes. So, excuse me, you're correct. But what I did want to say is that the Mass DOT official responded that the email that supposedly led people to believe which way they were leaning was actually sent in error. So the plot thickens.
Is Stoughton, is the route now there?
Well, it seems like the official said they were leaning towards Middleborough, but my, I suspect that since the official who sent that email said that it was sent in error, probably there is a lot of opposition to a Middleborough route, which is why they are very cautious not to show their hand.
I just wonder how much longer it's going to drag on before somebody makes a decision.
And like you, exactly, and like you said at the meetings, you know, we already could have been making progress on a Stoughton route, because it had all the necessary approvals. So we're literally waiting for nothing.
And all the tracks come right to Totten, just-
Exactly. Connect them like little, little dots that you connect.
And just to follow up to what Mr. Zagrafa said, because we have been, we have attended these meetings, and the meetings that we have attended, that have had people from all over Bristol County, Attleboro, New Bedford, wherever, majority of people at those meetings support the Stoughton route. If, I can't imagine they'd come back with that Middleborough route.
I agree.
And I think part of the problem, and I hope they got this message from the Attleboro meeting that we were at, you don't have to electrify the new route. Get it built, get the people off the road, get the ridership going.
Build the base, exactly.
And then consider if you're going to electrify the route. If we were waiting for electrification for the northeast Florida, there would be no trains running at all. I mean, that came many years later.
Well, it's very self, that mentality of if we don't do it 100% what we want right the first time, then we shouldn't do it at all. I think that's very self-defeating. I think they could, they could build it and not let perfect be the enemy of good. It won't be electric at first, but everything is already there. You can get it up and running and worry about that later.
The detour to Middleborough isn't going to be electric for the time being anyhow. And my other feeling is, the reason that they're saying, "Oh, we've got to do all this at once," is because when you add electrification to the route, it skyrockets. It goes up in billions. So I think it's a scare tactic, in all honesty.
To defeat it, exactly.
Come up with a real number to connect the rail line in Totten to the Stoughton line. As a matter of fact, that rail bed in Stoughton, part of it still has rails on it, because when I go up there and take back roads to get where I'm going, I drive over those old tracks. So not all the tracks have been removed, but-
I agree with you, because to compare the Stoughton line, which they want to be electrified, that will have a higher cost than the one that they're proposing for Middleborough that's not going to be electrified, and of course, that's going to cost less. So it's a way to kind of persuade people.
And it's going to carry, it's going to carry less passengers, it's going to take less cars off the road, it's going to take longer, it's like-
It's actually less of a wise investment, if you think about it, from a dollars and cents.
Exactly.
Put the money in and actually build a base of people who we know want to take the train to work in Boston.
I agree.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's good.
Jesse, you want to stir something up? Just bring up the South Coast Rail, anybody.
I'm all stirred up. Any public input? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Cable, and drive safely, people.
It's a good thing you caught me.